Well, hello everybody and welcome to today's webinar. We're excited to have you all on board. I hope you can hear me okay and see us okay. If you can't, please just pop a note in the chat just to let me know. So today, the purpose of today is just to take you through Taronga City Council's implementation and onboarding onto SAP Litmus. So we'll get started shortly. Just to let you know, we are going to be recording today's webinar. There will be a question and answer section at the end of the webinar. But if you do have any questions along the way, feel free to pop them into the questions section and we'll have my sidekick Pat Pearl to answer some of those questions as well. Before we get started on the questions today, I'm just going to introduce ourselves to you. So my name is Narelle Davis. I am a solutions consultant here at SAP Litmus. I've been with Learning Seat SAP Litmus for the last seven and a half years. Worked on many of the LMSs that we've had throughout our time. Love Litmus, it is my favorite by far, easy to use. My role is a solutions consultant. So as well as doing the onboarding for all of our new clients, I also help out with our existing clients. So if down the track you're looking to use some of the features that you perhaps haven't used in the past, I'm one of the girls that your C E will get in touch with, your account manager. Without further ado, I will now pass you over and introduce you to Daniel Moore, the portfolio manager at Taronga City Council. So Daniel, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Yeah, hi, thanks, Narelle. I'm portfolio owner or manager here at Taronga City Council. So linking our business objectives and what they want to achieve through the technologies, making sure we've got those, we're going to maximize our investment and get the right outcomes for what we want to achieve. Been with Taronga City Council about two years now, with an extensive background in ICT change and governance coming through there. And Jamie is our trainer, so Jamie, hand over to you.
Awesome, cheers, Dan. Yeah, thanks. Look, I'm the digital trainer at Taronga City Council. I've been with Taronga City Council for just under one year. Before that, I've spent about a decade in academia and formal learning from sort of teaching, supervising, right through to running a department. So I've got a real passion and interest in genuine learning, teaching, training, and that sort of whole process to really make a meaningful difference. So when I joined Taronga City Council, that was, that's my ambition and it continues to be.
Thank you, thank you so much for that. Just for everyone's background, I was the mentor for Taronga City Council. So I've worked with Daniel and Jamie for a month or so there, onboarding them onto the Litmus platform. So we had media meetings and a little bit of fun along the way as well. So have a really good rapport with them. So let's get started on our questions. So the first one is around Taronga City Council and just getting to know you guys a little bit better. Oh, sorry, I missed the agenda. Sorry about that. So you can see here we have an agenda that we're going to go through. So these are some of the questions that we'll ask along the way. And again, as I mentioned before, if you have any questions, feel free to pop them into the questions panel, just in the go to meeting there. Alrighty, so let's get started on the next slide there, which would be getting to know Taronga City Council. So you guys, as you can see there on the map, are located on the North Island of New Zealand. So apart from the obvious that you're a council and you look after the wellbeing of your community, can you tell us a little bit more about the organization?
Yeah, look, I'm happy to sort of front foot that a little bit. And I guess part of it is because I've been there for, again, under one year. So I've learned quite a bit about it and coming from a sort of a former academic background, it's been quite a bit of an eye opener. Probably the most striking characteristic that I've discovered is the diversity of the council. There are so many things that councils look after. It's just like 50 different business units. We've got parking offices, we've got people looking after dogs and dog registrations, we've got water care, we've got building inspections and consens. And it just goes on. And so people are located at different building sites. They have different experiences, different skill sets and different needs. And it's really diverse and everyone is just really knuckling down to support the community. So there's that real sort of diversity, I think, that really struck me originally, initially, as sort of the first challenge in terms of how do we roll something out across a whole organization when it's that diverse?
Yeah, I think I'd add to that, Jamie, that we have an under-invested technology stack. Our E R P system has basically reached end of life. So we're doing full swap out of everything across the board and trying to realize the advantages that technology can bring. We've got a slower change uptake, I guess, maybe a change of this culture to a little bit that we're trying to change and work through as we go through there. So products that can do what they say they'll do on the turn, that work well are really a big win for us. And anything that can link through to our ecosystem as we build there, we're building off a Microsoft SAP ecosystem is what we're looking to build through and leverage for our E R P in the future.
Yeah, thanks. And Dan, just sort of triggered a thought to add on to that was the sort of, I guess, the maturity of the organization at the time. So Taronga City Council is a fantastic place to work with great people. But in terms of a training capacity, it was essentially a blank canvas. And we'll probably touch on this a little bit more as we go through. But we really, we really were starting at that sort of black canvas where some teams were doing, you know, standing in a classroom, but others were just hoping people would figure it out. And others were shoulder tapping people in the shadows. Some were contracting other organizations to come in and do training, but nobody knew who was doing what. So you had the same thing happen in three different places, in three different ways, with no sort of transference, you know, between those. So lots of opportunities, there was a huge opportunity for us at that time, but huge challenges as well.
Excellent, yep. And talking about that training, what it was like for your organization prior to Litmus and also of course COVID for that matter, what would you say were the main drivers that propelled you to use the step change and in turn come to the realization that you did need an L M S?
I mean, I, from my perspective, Dan and I probably both have pretty strong opinions about it. From my perspective, even before I joined Taronga City Council, I knew that a learning management system was just going to be essential for consolidating and centralizing the training and learning initiatives. And of course, when we had to lock down and everybody had to go home, that need was just exemplified and it became urgent and it became immediate. And the sort of the cost to benefit ratio swung heavily in favor. And I think, you know, we saw so many, so many things that were emerging or had been done, which just physically could not continue under that current landscape. There were huge benefits, which everybody knew about shifting, but those benefits didn't become necessities until lockdown and everybody had to work from home.
Yep.
Yeah, I think we, our environment at that time, we had no method to deploy necessary training across everyone. We had no way to know who'd had what training, so there was no coordination there. There was no consistent user experience. We had business units would go off and buy L M S like functionality just to deliver one course and then another unit would buy that. So there was cost inefficiencies. And COVID presented this huge challenge for us that we were suddenly going to have, Taronga is a small town, you know, we've grown in the last 30 years, we've grown from 30,000 people to over 150,000. So, and everyone still knows each other within that framework. So suddenly we were going to have council employees working on private confidential information right beside their partner, who might be a property developer. So we had a real need around educating our people around their public records acts that had become suddenly more immediate than it had been in the past, to really understand what they needed to do with information. And we had no way to get that out to them in a consistent manner. We could have done online sessions, but we wouldn't have achieved the sort of outcomes that this product allowed us to achieve.
Brilliant. So once you realized all these factors, what was your approach or strategy in choosing suitable L M Ss? And what influenced your decision off the back of that to choose SAP Litmus?
Yeah, look, at the same, at the same time that we're doing this, we're going through the transition from the classic more sort of waterfall Prince Two project management to an agile structure. So we took a lot of lessons from that and went for the M V P approach and had that real clear understanding around what was going to make a difference for us, which was we needed to deploy really quickly to get this information out to help support our people. We needed to be able to track who'd had it. We needed a way to represent the organization structure within that product to target certain areas moving forward. We wanted to be able to have our managers take ownership into the future. So the project would, so the product would have a life past this initial point and would do two or three years. We wanted it to fit within our ecosystem. So, and we wanted it to be able to take material that we had from all our different providers. So that SCORM format functionality where you can just upload it was really, really important to us. So those, we had those must haves, that sort of Moscow analysis, must haves, should haves, could haves, nice to haves. And we really focused on those must haves. And what we found was that when we started to stack up some of the SAP products alone in the space, you know, this clearly, clearly won out in Litmus in that it was quick to deploy, it provided the functionality that we could load up any material from any of our providers, as long as it was SCORM compatible. We could represent our hierarchy, we could, in the future, we could allow managers to self assign and manage their sort of materials. We could run libraries. We had the bonus that it was prepackaged material in the future and that we could access to deploy to our people. So that sort of, whereas a lot of the other products were, you know, they needed a lot of infrastructure to set up, a lot of investment. And we were so, this is so new to our organization, that we could have invested a lot of money in setting up the perfect system and never used any of that functionality because fundamentally we didn't have the competency structure linking through to courses or anything like that, that drives a lot of the more technical L M Ss. So the flexibility within Litmus was a key factor to us. And I know Jamie and I spent about a day interchanging as managers and employees, just to check that we had that functionality into the future when we chose to deploy it, to allow the different managers to run their own courses and assign it to their employees. Anything you want to add, Jamie?
Yeah, look, I'll just sort of extend on that a little bit and say that when I had joined, Dan had already done quite a bit of homework on platforms and he presented this as, you know, as an option, as well as some of the other alternatives. But what really excited me was that ability to get, to replicate our organizational structure within Litmus. So we could see the potential for scaling this out because at the, at present, you know, I'm the first person really coming into council saying, here's what we need to do for training and here, and I'm going to be the resource to make this going ahead in the future, that's not going to be sustainable. We need our teams to have some autonomy and some control over how they go. And seeing that organizational structure was a huge opportunity for us. The other thing that sort of got me on the edge of my seat with a bit of excitement were the features that enabled a little bit of blended learning. So it's not all automated, it's not all exclusively self-directed. There are opportunities in there for trainers and for coaches, advisors, mentors to actually engage with learners, whether it's an instructor led session or whether or not that's actually manually verifying that things have been completed and providing feedback. To me, this really lifts the ability of the platform to provide not only that lower level knowledge based learning, which is commonly associated with sort of, you know, self-directed online stuff, but actually higher level, more critical engagement, more sort of soft skill development, leadership capability. So that showed that there's potential for this platform, not only in terms of scaling it out across the organization, but also rolling it out across different learning needs and learning levels, so that we can make a meaningful difference. It's not just content deployment anymore, it's actually engaging with learners.
Fantastic. And, yeah, sorry, go, Daniel.
I think, you know, we'll talk about it as we go through, but that step change that it's created for us in that learning environment where our learners can now pull the material rather than us pushing to it, to them, they could do it at home in their own time, which was massive to us in COVID, where we had, you know, we were working with kids. Oh, you would have remembered the calls, Narelle, as we're trying to roll it out, kids screaming in the background, my particular little rascals. You know, so working at night and working in the day and that ability to do that and then report on it at the back end of who we needed to offer extra support to, to get through this material, to be able to meet our compliance obligations around that sort of stuff. It was just, it was a, it was a real game changer. I think for me, every now and again, you get to work on a project that you know is going to make a difference. So we had been looking for a way to help our organization take the step to go into a learning management system. You know, we called it the field of dreams, build it and they will come. And so never let a good crisis go to waste was the other catchphrase.
Yeah, that's right.
COVID provided the opportunity to make this investment and to take a bit of a risk and get going on it. And that's, the payback is immense. You know, Jamie's run off his feet creating courses where everyone can see what it can do. So now they want a course, we're getting a consistent learner experience across those courses. So it's just, learning is becoming a thing in our organization where it was disparate, unlinked pieces. It's now, you know where to go to get your learning, you're getting a consistent user experience that's improving all the time.
Yep, great. And would it be fair to say that as well, you also had that support from higher management, you know, to run with the Litmus and be able to push out that learning?
Yeah, look, that was a big factor in that our digital officer, chief digital officer, he saw the benefit of this and he had the vision, like all good chief digital officers, his vision was, I went to him and went, hey, we can do this, you sure you want to do it? And then his answer was, haven't you done it already? The rollout plan that they have for an express rollout is eight weeks. And he said, I'll give you a week. So he settled for two weeks that we managed to achieve it within. But that made a difference, that he was willing to embrace the M V P concept. He agreed with the analysis around what we were going to achieve and that the rest would just be nice to haves. And we could connect it to that, that core need of what we were going to get out of this, which was enabling our people around this privacy education that we really needed to get for them. And so he focused, he did a really good job of staying focused in that outcome level and staying out of the technical level and providing us the space to get this done.
Fantastic. So off the back of you just mentioning that you implemented Litmus, the SAP Litmus platform within two weeks, so you won a Lenny Award, so congratulations. And that was the best transition to remote, remote training. So just so I can fill in our listeners, within two weeks of signing with SAP, you'd rolled out your first course to over 900 employees. And this is my favorite part, you had 90% completion rate. So tell us what your focus and strategy was with regards to the launch and how you managed to get a 90% completion rate on that course?
Yeah, look, again, we used that M V P style approach of knowing what was really important that was going to make the difference. So while we had spent that day, Jamie and I, testing the manager assignment and all that sort of stuff, we didn't need that for that first rollout of getting these privacy courses. So we actually retained that, Jamie and I, as the admins and reporters on that, and pushed the course out to people. So it was a real focus on what was really going to make the difference to get this across the line. And I know, Narelle, I think, you know, you would have, you would have felt it as we went through that process, it was, we called it the interrogation, you know, where we came into each meeting and we knew what we wanted to ask. We went there for pitches around how stuff worked, but we wanted to know, how do we do this? This is what we're going to do, how do we get it done? And so I think that real focus enabled us to pursue that. Would you add anything, Jamie?
Yeah, look, I think we were, I mean, as you said earlier, Dan, never let a good crisis go to waste. So the timing was just perfect. We also had a very relevant, very meaningful module to roll out to the organization that was also very timely, because we did need to ensure that we were providing that content to, to the entire organization across the board. So we were able to get executive support, we were able to get endorsement, we listed out lots of communications. And then of course, with the reporting that Litmus has, it was really easy for us to close that loop and to circle it back around to the people, leaders and the managers and send out reminders. And people knew that there was an expectation upon them, they knew that they were accountable for managing their own learning now. And this was just, you know, it was beautiful to see. And it's part of the reason why we achieved such a high completion rate is because not only is it self-directed, but it's also, you know, it's also self-monitored. People know that they do it and there's accountability built in there. So we were able to really achieve this from both a push and pull perspective, which sort of speaks to success.
Yeah, we also paid.
You go.
We also paid attention to, you know, the usual change management stuff. So we tried to make sure that this was led from our executive team, that they were, that the messages were pushed out from them around why this was important. We covered off the whats in it for them. You know, we made sure that people understood that this was about helping them in their roles and protecting them when they're at home. And then we used the reporting in a mechanism to show that, hey, we were watching this and that this was something that was expected to be done. And we offered support where we could see low completion rates in teams off to the side. So we used all those good change management principles, that was a core part of how to get people to engage with it. We spent a lot of time, you know, messaging the material from kind of a non-educated person's point of view, I guess, who hadn't been exposed to this privacy stuff, to make sure that the messages were simple, they could be digested really well, nice bite-sized chunks. So, you know, who wants to sit there and do an hour-long privacy training course? I couldn't think of anything worse. So we tried to make it as engaging as possible. And, but we didn't let that get in the way of actually meeting that deadline and getting that material out. I know when we look back at that course now, Jamie, it's, it's not our greatest work compared to some of the other stuff now that we've learned more about the tool. But again, that focus on the M V P, that we needed to get this out and that was core to us and we could learn that later, is what came through. The organization has brought on amazingly to it. And now as they see the new functionality that Jamie's been able to uncover in the tool and start to use, it's just increasing demand exponentially. Everyone wants a piece of Jamie's time to get him going. And it's really becoming that change driving factor in our organization that's, you know, people, people know where to go for their training. It's just revolutionizing the access people have to material in our organization.
Yep. I find that really interesting because often clients will say to me, you know, what's, how can we make it, you know, most engaging and how can we, you know, have those high completion rates, especially with the launch? So, and most clients tend to try and use an incentivized type scenario where they'll, you know, offer, you know, the first team to complete something, there's, you know, prize incentives. But I find that, you know, really interesting that you guys mentioned that it just came from that engagement from the management piece. So it was coming from all sides. And it really does go to show that you don't need to use those incentives. I think if you really have everyone on the same page at that same level, driving the L M S, that you can certainly have a successful launch and a completion rate.
Yeah, I think it's, it's attacking it at all levels, isn't it? You know, we, both Jamie and I, used our networks to create a buzz through coffee conversations and that sort of stuff. And we had three or four other people doing that. We made sure that it was part of our chief executives briefings, that it was mentioned in all his emails and all his video chats. And we did a little bit too of, you know, pulling out the stats and you can game the general managers against each other. Hey, he's got 70% completion and you've only got 60. Sure you, you know, do you need a little bit of help? Oh no, you're all right. Using all those change tools in the toolkit.
Yep, that's great, fantastic. So I heard about your return to work strategy after the first wave of COVID, so where the workers were just sort of getting used to working from home and now everyone was able to return to work. Fill us in about the needs of your health, safety and wellbeing team and what they were looking for and exactly how you went about this with SAP Litmus? And lastly, why it was such a success with the organization?
Yeah, so this is a, this little need came out about a week or two after we'd sort of rolled out this, this privacy module. And it was someone from Health and Safety and Wellness recognizing the potential and they were up against a challenge. So at the time, New Zealand had gone into a full lockdown and we were just now allowing people to return to work, but there were a suite of practices which people would need to comply with in order to be safe while returning to work. The challenge, of course, was how do you actually educate people on this when they're not at work? And then how do you know who's done it? How do you know if they've understood what's happening? And then how do you use that information to actually provide some sort of control? So this was a challenge that they were up against and they engaged myself and Dan and we came up with a plan. And the plan was quite simple, it's a video that they'd put together saying, you know, here's how you, you know, simple stuff, washing hands, social distancing, but there's also P P E wearing, there's a few other practices, changing the way the swipe cards worked on the doors, entrance and exit, and that kind of thing for, for contact tracing. And what we did is we wrapped that into an online module and we attached a quiz at the end of it. Now, the quiz was to simply assess their understanding of the video, because without that, you have no idea if people have actually taken it on board. And we made the quiz as challenging as we could, so people would get it wrong, you know, if they hadn't paid a lot of attention. Even if they had, they might have forgotten, was it one meter or two? So we put that into place. And of course, once somebody had completed that, then we were able to provide some reporting statistics that were sent immediately to the health, safety and wellbeing team. And they were able to see who's completed it, therefore whose swipe card access can we activate. It was just, it was just a nice little example of a way that we were able to implement the e-learning platform to deliver some content, to validate understanding, and then to use reporting to actually change the way people had access to the, to the building. And it came just so soon after we rolled this out, the timing was amazing. And it works, it worked really well, it worked really well. We learned a little bit about it, but overall, that was a, that was a nice little successful story for us to sort of, you know, to springboard us towards even more, you know, more innovative ideas.
Yeah, it was, I remember that when they came through, you know, and they said, hey, we've, we've got this video, but we don't know, we don't know how to get it out to people. We're just going to email it out, we'll have no idea who's done it, but we'll just have to, it's the risk we're going to have to take. And we could sort of go, that field of dreams, build it and they will come. We're like, oh, look, here, we've got something we prepared earlier for you. Why don't we stick your video in this? You can actually get all these emails, like Jamie said, automated through to you. You want to do a little quiz? Yeah, here, here we go. We had that quiz done within about half a day, wasn't it, Jamie? And through to them to test and then put up. And that was all just because, you know, Litmus is, is really that easy, we've found it. You know, you can, it's, even I could create the first draft of the quiz and then get Jamie to flash it up. That's, we were amazed. And to be able to meet your business need like that and take them from just sending out a video where they wouldn't get replies, they wouldn't know who'd actually come back into the building and that safety compliance was going to be a real issue. And to be able to solve that problem for them was just amazing for the growth of the product and the investment that we had in our organization.
Brilliant. So off the back of the return to work course, you've also since created many other courses within the platform. Can you tell us a bit about these?
Yeah, so look, we have been, it's sort of snowballed, of course, having, you know, over 90% of the organization now familiar with the platform and having completed at least one course, the word was out and people saw the opportunity. So it was coming through. Now, what, a course that we did shortly afterwards, which again, you know, excited me a little bit, because it gave us an opportunity to use the platform for high level learning, so real capability development. And this was one on Grow Coaching. So Grow is an acronym and it's a coaching methodology that can help people, leaders and mentors, to support their team and colleagues to sort of face challenges and achieve goals and that kind of thing. It's a really cool model. And what we were able to do is we were able to create a couple of modules and we built them and we deployed them on, on the L M S. The first module was really about content. It's about, this is what the model is and this is how it works. Here's the theory behind it, here's the understanding and here's some resources for more information. So after having read that, you know, I would say that a learner might have achieved a bit of knowledge, maybe a little bit of understanding, but were they really able to implement this in their practice? You know, had they achieved that high level learning that was going to make a difference to their world? Because I, my concern with a lot of e-learning, self-directed learning, is that it's, it's quite ephemeral. You can look at it and put it down and you can immediately forget it, even if you pass the quiz, doesn't mean you're going to change the way you work and the way that, you know, your capability. So what we did is we followed this up with another module that required the learner to provide a reflection on their coaching, coaching conversation with their colleague or mentee. So in this reflection, it was essentially set up as an assessment, which was then manually graded. And we asked a lot of open-ended reflective questions, such as how did you find the conversation? Are there any things that you feel you could have done better? What were the things that you did really well? You know, when are you going to chat with them next and what's that going to be about? So we were requiring the learner to be quite self-reflective and critical about how they'd applied the information that was in the previous module. And then what we had is we had our H R business partners look at the reflections that the learners had provided and provide some feedback to the learner. And of course, if it looked like from the reflection that the learner hadn't really understood or applied this knowledge in a way that was intended, they could get in contact with this individual and start a conversation and take it further forwards. Otherwise, they could provide a bit of, you know, feedback to go here and, you know, here's some direction. And overall, that was quite a success. So we had a huge uptake in the online component, lots of people using the content to sort of gauge themselves and a really positive uptake in the reflection as well. We didn't make it compulsory, because it just wasn't the tone of what we were after at the stage. But we had a really good uptake of people who chose to do this. So they chose to take the information and then they chose to apply it. So, you know, active learning or through experience and through doing is such a powerful, a powerful way to learn, that they took that opportunity to have that conversation and then to be critical and reflective. And then we saw the evidence of that in their reflections. And then we saw the evidence of that in their reflections. And again, that's just, you know, it's a possibility and there are opportunities for us to really explore that moving forwards when we're looking at what are our learning and development needs. It's not just about, it's not just about the training side of it. It's not just about information transmission. But the tool that must enables us to ensure people or to support people applying this into their life, you know, it's sort of that that model. If we're to compare it with kids swinging on a chair, you might tell the child to stop swinging on a chair and they might understand why they've been told to stop swinging on the chair. But sometimes they just need to fall off that chair and then they think, hey, actually, now I've learned. I've had an experience. A little bit of failure is is a catalyst for so much learning and you don't fail unless you try. And you're not gonna try unless there's some form of accountability or some loop in there or some acknowledgement of your attempts and effort. And we can, we can apply that through Litmus, through, you know, those sort of manual checklists that that you've got through the assessments with reflections. There's also the instructor-led training. So there's a handful of modules. And as I mentioned at the beginning, that's what sort of attracts my attention to the platform. And that's one of the things that I'm really excited about leveraging more as we move forwards. It's just, you know, let's move the needle. Let's just, you know, let's go further than info transmission. Let's actually really empower empower our staff and develop their capability as professionals and as people in meaningful ways. And you have to have some level of reflection, of critical engagement, of human interaction. That can't be exclusively automated and online. So we were able to do that. And this, this course, which was, I don't know, somewhere between the third and maybe the fifth or sixth sort of module that we'd managed to roll out. Was the first time that we were able to put a little bit of that blended learning in, you know, a little bit of this and it worked well. And so, yeah, we were super excited about doing more of that. And and we have a whole roadmap of training, learning, development ahead of us and a whole, uh, one of those roads is all about people development. It's all about capability and competency. And I'm confident that with the ability to embed this sort of blended learning approach that we can actually achieve some outcomes in that area. Without it, uh, you know, I wouldn't be quite so confident. So yeah, again, it's, it's exciting. And that was a great, that was a great module to to roll out early in in the piece. And evidence that we can do things, you know, we can, we can do things that are engaging and that that get people really thinking, even though it's online and self-directed.
Yeah. I mean, it sounds to me like we might need to do another webinar on that whole section because that's the first I've, I've heard of a client using that in that self-reflective scenario. And I love it. I think it's great. I think it's the way that we're moving forward. In that, like you said, it's not just the online learning and an automated process, that there can be a little bit more human interaction in that scenario. So yeah, stay tuned. I might have to use that too with the onboarding and in in when clients ask about new ways of that other, that other clients are using the platform. So thank you. That's a great insight.
Yeah, no, you're welcome. And and as I sort of mentioned to at the beginning, it's what sort of really got me quite excited. And I think it's you know, my sort of academic background and and focus on teaching and learning practices and what really makes a difference in people's lives. It is the application of learning. It's, it's, it's applying it and developing those, those experiences. It's failing and being reflective. And that's just something that you need, you need another layer to in order to do that. So you can't, you can't just throw out a piece of content and expect people's behaviour to change. They might know something, doesn't mean they do it differently. I often use the analogy of playing a piano. You might know what, what a scale is and what the keys are and you might be able to read the music and and understand it, but doesn't mean you can actually do it. And if you want people to do things differently at work, then you've got to give them the, you know, you've got to take them through that. And that's where a blended learning approach comes in. And Litmus supports that. So it's, it's awesome and exciting.
Yeah. And you touched on a few of the, um, the Litmus functionality that you used when it came to to setting that up. Is there anything, any features you'd possibly like to start using in the future that perhaps you haven't currently?
Um, yeah, look, I think so. And this sort of really leads into our, our future plans for the platform. Definitely the, you know, the blended learning stuff, I've sort of talked about that enough, but those are features that we're gonna leverage more and more. But I, right at the very beginning, I think where we talked about how the organisational structure can be replicated in a team structure of Litmus. And what we want is we want a solution that we can scale, we can roll out. We want teams to be able to create their own content, to manage their own content, to manage their own learning. Because we've got, as I said, about fifty different business units, you know, the, the, the people doing registering dogs is gonna need different training than the people that are filtering the water supply. And so we need to be able to distribute that. And I think there are some tools, especially recently with the new authoring tool that are just gonna open the can on that possibility. So in terms of our future goals, it's definitely the direction we're going. We want to empower, we want to encourage our team, our whole organisation to be able to identify their training needs. So we're gonna be developing systems and processes to ensure that they have the capability within them within their own teams to, you know, identify those learning needs and then come up with the right training approach. We'll support them with that. But of course, without the technology, without the ability for them to go in and actually create that content, that would have been a huge bottleneck for our ability to roll out. So that's that number three on there. Yep, is hugely exciting. And then as we move on forwards, it just, it just goes on from there.
Yeah, I think those, the new learner pathways that we want to move to are really, really exciting where you know, you can, as a new employee, how do you, how do you learn all the stuff you need to know about an organisation? You know, and we were traditionally a classroom-based environment. So you came in and you sat for the first couple of days in a few classrooms and you had a whole lot of notes that you lost and you didn't really know what was going on. Whereas the vision is that we can be assigned to different learning pathways depending on the role. And you can pull that material when you're ready for it. You can refresh on it. You can study it in your own time and go back to it. And then those pathways will be modular so that, you know, you might be, everyone does the general new starter on risk and privacy, but then you do a specific one for waters and engineering and you do another one for ICT. So that we can hone in on those core features and we can develop people along learning pathways for where they're going. You know, we started from a very classroom-based driven approach. And so this ability to move to people being able to pull and consume when they want, I think it's core to where we wanna go. Our managers being able to take ownership for being able to provide that material to people. And we've had a number of successes already where, while a course may be compulsory for people, we'll stick it in our library so that others can, you know, they hear about this initiative. And so they might choose to study it in their own time to know a bit about it. So we're getting that kind of spread of information across the organisation coming out through it.
I think just sort of adding on to something that you mentioned there, Dan, it's, it's sort of got me thinking that one of the, you know, one of the ones that we've had so far and the transition from where we were, which was, you know, predominantly classroom-based, a sort of didactic info transmission, training sessions, you know, you had knowledgeable persons there and the people sitting on the chairs get to it, listen and to absorb quite passively. Which is unsurprisingly the preferred method of learning, generally speaking, for for most people to actually be taught by somebody who's actually in the room and giving them information. But what, what we've learned over the years and what research has told us is that the preferred method of learning is not always the most effective method of learning. And actually, as Saldem is, the more effective methods of learning are those which require a little bit more effort and a bit more autonomy and a bit more accountability for for what people are doing. So by taking away the classroom-based model and replacing it with online learning, we've not only created, well, removed something that wasn't scalable, but we've actually created a learning environment that can be more effective, provided it's implemented correctly, then then people sort of sitting and passively absorbing it. So we still every now and then get the occasional person saying, oh, you know, I'd like to arrange some training, please, so you can teach me how to use this tool. And now I'm in a position where I can just sort of basically send an email or a link and they've got some great little links that go straight to the module. Says, well, you know what? This is all, you know, you can, you can, you can do this. You don't need me.
Yep.
You can get in touch with us or somebody if, after having completed it, you still need that support. But if people can take it upon themselves to manage your own learning, then we're in a much better place. And so, and so are our learners.
Yep, exactly.
I think that's been, you know, it's been really nice when you go to some of these exec conversations and it's moved from, you know, they don't say, how are we gonna do training? Because they're like, you know, they just point and go, you'll be putting this in Litmus, won't you? You know, so there, it's just become part of the way we work. It's amazing. I think something I'd add is you know, when we looked at this product and and moving with those kind of agile approaches of start small, test often and move forward and iterate on it. The cost, there was another factor that went out for us was the cost of setting up Litmus and establishing this in a two-week period. And then learning from that moving forward, because we didn't really have a centralised LMS was nothing compared to putting in some of these bigger systems where they're gonna take you six months to put in. What we learned in that two weeks around the need, needs of our organisation would have paid for it, even if we'd decided that it wasn't right for us. And so I think it's a really good, easy-to-test bed using Litmus and most of the time, unless you have a very developed, very complex, role-driven, competency-based framework, I think Litmus will, would meet your needs.
Yep.
So I'd be really encouraging people to to think about that agile approach and and what they can learn by putting in a system like this. Our payback period, I think, was about six months for the investment that we needed. But we certainly see it as not needing review for three to four years.
Brilliant.
So the return on investment is a no-brainer.
Yeah, certainly has. And in terms of, I think you did touch on it earlier, Jamie, or maybe it was you, Daniel, in terms of moving forward, what what's on the agenda for Taronga City Council in the immediate future in terms of learning?
So we have, we've got a couple of, yeah, a couple of pathways, a couple of strategies. First and foremost is sort of our risk and compliance. We wanna make sure that we're running an organisation safely and effectively. And we need to, to do that, we need to, you know, manage our risk and we need to make sure that everyone who's working for us and who starts to work for us has a really good grasp on their obligations with, you know, privacy and resource, document management. Now, this is something that might not be quite so highly prioritised in the private sector, but in the public sector, this is of huge importance. We also, of course, have the overarching goal to serve our community. So everything that we do, all the training that we do, needs to direct loop right around again to making sure that those deliverables are actually benefiting our community. And to be able to do that, we need to be great at what we would do. So then the third sort of stream of this, of course, is the capability development. We need leaders that are good leaders. We need, we need to know what our values are, what our priorities are in the organisation and how we're gonna operate as teams. And a lot of that stuff is gonna come through capability development. And as I mentioned before, that's the sort of stuff you can't learn from reading alone. You can't pick up a book and actually do that. You've got to get in there and practise. So we're gonna be developing some more blended learning opportunities where there's modules that are online, but there's also expectations for people to get out there in the world and actually do it. And be paired up with individuals to support them and to reflect on it. And we're building that into the way in which we acknowledge performance in the organisation. So it's a really broad strategy and e-learning is gonna be a central and key part of that. So that's a sort of focus in terms of the topics and the areas that we're, we're looking to to sort of roll it out. Which I guess goes in parallel with our strategy to scale and to empower business units to do the more sort of specific job-related tasks and training that they need to do at the same time.
Fantastic. Well, that brings us to the end of our scheduled questions that I had for you guys today. Um, we might move into the, the question section and just see if we've got any questions from any of our attendees from today. First one I can see here is from Pace. What was the name of the module you used for the coaching? Was that an internal one that you guys created that you created?
We did, we did create it. It's called Grow. So G R O W, Grow Coaching. And I think it was G stands for goals, you identify your goals. R stands for the reality, check on where it is, where you are. O, the options that you have to go to, 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 you know, to start to achieve them and to look towards them. And then W is, you know, what's your way forward? How are you gonna go about that? So it's really about, it's a series of questions, right? So you're not giving anyone any advice, you're not giving them guidance, you're just asking questions that follow that, that, that process. And we created that module and, yeah, we created internally and rolled it out.
I think that the, the platform allowed us to utilise a lot of functionality within that, that I think was a plus for Litmus. So we could, we could build that course and we could upload it so that, you know, you had, if you got the answer right, then you could skip ahead sections. If you didn't get the answer right, then you had to go through the next section and some other questions. You could provide feedback as you went through the sections. You could put in quizzes. So we were impressed at the, the sort of full LMS functionality that you get from a software as a service product like Litmus. Like I said at the start, you know, you, some software as a service products don't live up to the hype of what they can do, but we've been really impressed with Litmus that everything that we didn't have a chance to test as we're buying, which has to take off the literature, we can actually utilise and we can deliver. So we split this into two courses, one for people doing, doing the material so that the employees and another for the managers. And so we could assign both appropriately, only to people managers and only to employees. We could use a lot of that functionality of diagrams and flows and make that learning really, really interested as you move through. And what we found that was really cool is the employees not only did their, but but quite a few of them went and did the manager's training as well to see what was going on there because they quite enjoyed the experience that Litmus was providing.
Yep. Brilliant. And next question we have from Joanna is, do you have a, probably you, Jamie? Do you have a dedicated person employee who looks after your content?
So, yeah, look, really good question. We do. And yes, that's me right here. So I joined. I mean, look, that, that, it's, I guess the shortfall in the organisation's ability to deliver training and learning has been known for, for quite a while before I started. I started just over, just under a year ago. And since then, we are now sort of looking at developing a bit more of a learning and developing capability area. Are a handful of individuals across the organisation who look after training in certain pockets. We have a contact centre. So somebody is there to help onboard and train the people as they've joined the contact centre and they've developed a knowledge base. So there are individuals like that that are scattered across the organisation that are looking after their own little pocket pocket area of the work that they do. But in terms of providing that overarching, you know, oversight of the content that we have on the learning management platform and how we're gonna be doing that, that that does fall onto me at the moment. Although I think at the rate that we are rolling this out and the rate that we are growing, I'm confident that me as a team will, will be growing at some stage. And we can sort of start to invest a little bit more in the development of content and free up a bit more space to ensure that our strategy for identifying our learning needs, that there's actually capability, capacity to continue working in those areas as well. So it's a very small team at the moment, but yeah, watch the space.
Yeah, I think that this key, that that's key part of our strategy, Jamie, at the moment, that you kind of normalise the content to a degree. And we drive that from how do we make this so that anyone can understand the material? And we have a number of, number of examples of prepackaged stuff given to us of, hey, roll this out. And so then we've had an investment and well, you know, actually, let's put it through a little bit of a test group. Look, they can't understand anything in there, but it will work with you to make it more understandable to people. And so that's been a core and in keeping that consistency across the material, keeping it relatable, keeping it understandable to be uploaded, particularly where it's gonna be mandated out across the organisation. So we have retained through digital and then up through GM as the pathway, if you wanna send it out to the whole organisation. And so a manager can send stuff out just to his team, but kind of keep that hierarchical approach so that we don't get, you know, someone coming along and wanting to send everyone training in how to reorder their new glass collection bin. You know, and making it a compulsory course for everyone to do. That wouldn't, wouldn't go down that well. But Jamie's been, done a fantastic job and working with our people around that.
Yeah, that, that's right. And look, you've raised some good points. There's, there's huge value in ensuring that quality assurance is, you know, is well provided. The last thing I wanna see is training material that's going out, that's arbitrarily taken a box for, you know, some sort of requirement. But their, their learning experience is gonna be ineffective and and potentially unpleasant if the content is not well-prepared and and well-considered with how it's gonna engage a learner. And then, of course, we've got, we've, we've got so many business units and so many individuals that if we weren't careful, everyone would want everything to go to everyone all the time. And we're gonna hit a capacity on a consumption rate. So we've, we've created some models where we think, well, this is how many modules we think the average staff member should be expected to complete. And we, let's not break that. Let's not, let's not go beyond that. So how do we make sure that the learning that we roll out is actually really really valuable and really important? And at the moment, that's, that's relatively easy for me to provide oversight on. But as we grow and we scale and we start rolling out the ability for our business units to create their own content, that's gonna get a little bit more tricky.
Yep. Fair enough. So would you have, do you have any guidelines in place at the moment or it's more just get in touch with your team to have a rollout of a certain learning?
It's a bit of both, a bit of both. Yeah, we, we have some guidelines and guidelines, I guess, are informed by our experiences. So that every time we see someone, we think, hey, that's great. We should make that, you know, we should keep that in or that was terrible. Let's make sure we never do it again. So it's a bit of a living document, but at the moment, it does, it does go through me and I am encouraging our business units, look, just get in touch, let's have a conversation and let's, let's figure it out.
Yeah, I'm laughing because sorry, I'm laughing because as a council, we love a Sorry, I'm laughing because as a council, we love a process. Of course, there's heaps of processes, but no one ever follows them. And so the, you know, there's a, people can log a service, this ticket with our team and that sort of stuff, but much more of it's done through, we discover a project or a bit of a shoulder tap and we kind of get Jamie to help them move through it as we increase the understanding. I mean, I think the, we come from a basis where no one was even doing training, they were just dropping stuff out there to now they know that Jamie's there and so they're asking Jamie for that help, you know, and how do we move that from being right at the end of projects, which has happened with a couple of them, being guilty of that myself, to being more at the front. So training becomes part of that integral part of how you develop the product and how do you learn along the way. That's another part of the journey that we're on. I think Jamie's done a fantastic job of raising the training profile in the organisation.
Excellent.
Thanks.
And this one's probably more of an onboarding question from Joanne. Do you send your, do you send training to your new employees before they're in the system? So I'm assuming that means either Litmus or your payroll. How do you cover that?
Um, so, yeah, I can answer that one. So we, as a new employee is created in our systems, then they're created on the, what's it, the active directory, we use Microsoft three, six, five. So it's sort of, their accounts are sort of permeated across everything. We do create the Litmus account at that point in time. We have a new starter learning path, which has, you know, a dozen modules in it now that they get. So what we do is we try and time it so that Litmus allocates, automatically allocates the learner to that learning path shortly after their account in Litmus has been created. That's going to send the learner an email in their inbox, but they don't yet know how to access their inbox. They haven't been shown that yet. The learner will turn up for a in-person induction, which we have gone back to now that we have the luxury of doing that. And in that, the IT induction will show them, hey, here's your inbox and look at this, here's an email from, you know, from Litmus. And they can talk about both the e-learning platform and show them how to access it at the same time. So I guess in short, the answer is yes, we do set them up or we do assign it and the learning is just waiting for them at the moment that they can access it. And what we'll do is we'll go and there is the ability to send an email to anyone that hasn't logged in after a certain amount of time. So, you know, once every few weeks, I'll go in and just basically click a button and anyone that hasn't logged in will receive another email from the platform saying, you know, your learning's there, ready to go.
Yeah, I think, I think the exact sequence of onboarding events will really depend on how, you know, how the onboarding and induction goes. We've just, we just managed to line this one up with the IT induction because it's when they're actually sitting in front of the laptop with someone who's showing them how to do things. And it's really nice to have that waiting there and ready, but it's by no means the only way. We considered quite a few options and there are many. So I think, yeah, we haven't, we haven't enabled it before people join, so they have to come in for that first session. Though we could do that if we wanted, the product definitely has that capability. The way we've set up our security infrastructure at the moment, though, we do two-factor authentication, so they get set up with that when they come in. So it's a bit easier to do it that way. Though we could segregate and do it in advance if we wanted, the Litmus has the capabilities. I think single sign-on was really easy to switch on for the product. It took us about half a day and makes a massive difference that employees don't have to remember their password. We have that challenge where we have a lot of systems out there where you have to enter individual passwords and we didn't want that happening here. We wanted it to be click on a link and you're in there and it's taking your office three, six, five password. And that was another thing that Litmus did out of the box, you know, it was a couple of settings and bang, we were in. So it's been fantastic. So then we can run it off an AD group, we've got all that security, we meet all our policies. It's fantastic.
Right. So the next question is kind of surrounding that, but you have answered that in terms of the single sign-on. But have you, have you integrated Litmus with your HRS? You're not using an API, are you currently?
Yeah, so we haven't gone down that pathway yet, but it wouldn't be that hard to do for where we're at. We're actually in the midst of also swapping out our HRIS components that we've got and moving through to another SAP product and success factors. So we are using the single sign-on, but we haven't utilised any of the API exports, though we can definitely see how we would do that in the future. It's been a massive learning just for us to put in a centralised LMS and control it out of that. And so that would be the next step, whether we would export to Power BI. We've investigated that a little bit and that's really easy to do. We can pull that data out and present it through Power BI if we wanted. But we haven't gone through to pulling it into any HRIS system, mainly because we don't have those components in our HRIS at the moment.
Yep, fair enough. I think this question's probably for me. Is there a data limit in Litmus, number of courses and participants? No, the answer would be in terms of users, Litmus is capable to holding thousands of users. We have quite some large organisations using the Litmus platform and that would be the same with the courses. We would, you'd have the potential to buy our suite of courses. So we have the Learning Seat Compliance Library for the AMZ space and then we also have the Litmus Heroes, which is the soft skills. So, yeah, there's definitely tends to not be any data limitations there on that. And...
Yeah, I think two, one of the, one of the other things, sorry, that you have there is you also licence on a monthly basis. So I think we found that's been very competitive for us, where I think we've got a block of 600. And so as long as we stay within that for any month, then we're fine. So you don't, you can work the licensing to your cost advantage, I guess. You know, there's very flexible licence models that make it cost-effective was another key point for us.
Yeah, so you can have as many active users within the Litmus platform as you like, but if they don't log in for that month, then you're not billed for those users. So it's only the only active unique user login for that month that you're charged for. So they can stay live, but hopefully explain that okay. And the last question we have here, just to squeeze in, is about the Litmus reporting. How do you guys find the Litmus reporting functionality?
I mean, look, for what we need, it's a nail on the head. We can set them up, customise it, define our criteria and then set it to automatically email somebody else. So if they need to know how many people are attempting the course, completing it, how their team is going, then we can set that up and automate it and they can flick it out and they get it. And because it exports in a CSV or Excel file, then if there's anything that the reporting engine can't tell us from that specific report, it's not usually too tough to actually just do that, you know, to do some data processing in Excel and just sort of apply different logic to answer a different question. So you look for, from what we need, we haven't yet found that we weren't able to get the data that we needed out of Litmus.
Brilliant. Well, I think that brings us to the end of the questions for today. I think we're right on time as well. So I'd like to thank you both for your time. I hope it has been a very beneficial one. I'm sure I've actually got a lot out of the session myself. I'm sure the rest of our attendees did as well. So again, thank you so much, Daniel and Jamie. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. We're always happy to share and show people what's going on.
Thanks, everybody.